So it will take a few minutes.
Sir.
Nothing. They won't stop.
Good afternoon.
I know.
Okay.
You ever doing alright? No. Actually had a little. Do or don't. Yeah. Kind of like.
Yeah.
I say that if it's something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I love it. Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, how are you there?
We need to do a new pastor. That that sounds that sounds like there's something you want to up there like getting something wet.
All right, we are ready when you are. Recording? All right, now call the city council regular meetings order. For June twenty third at six P M. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation been given by Pastor Elisha Singh with the Victory Tabernacle Church. If you can please approach the microphone there.
Praise God. Father, we praise you this afternoon. We give you all the glory. We honor your great name, God. You are great and greatly to be praised from the rising of the sun, even to the going down of the very same. Your name is worthy. Lord, we invoke your presence into this building tonight, oh God. Lord, as your people. God, to discuss business, oh God, concerned in the city of Avon Park. Lord, I pray that you will be with them. I pray that you will guide and that you will direct our Lord. I pray that they will consult you in everything that they do, God. Lord, we pray for this city. We pray, God, for the leaders. Lord, we pray for those that make decisions, that you will give them godly wisdom, I pray. Father, we pray for the city of Avon Park and the surrounding cities. We pray, God, that, Lord, new business will be, uh, will come into this city, oh God, into the county. We pray that, Lord, you will bring job opportunities for your people. Lord, we pray for every department, oh God, in this county, for the sheriff department, for the H M S. We pray for city council, for those, God, oh, that are in charge. I pray, Lord, that they will, before they make any decisions, oh God, they will con- consult you and you will indeed speak to them, God, in the name of Jesus. Lord, we pray even for the homeless in the city tonight. God, I pray that you will provide for them. I pray that you will continue to watch over them, oh God. You promise that you will keep us in perfect peace, whose mind is stayed on you. And Lord, we pray that our minds be stayed on you tonight. Have your way tonight, oh God. Whatever will be said, whatever will be done tonight, I pray that it will be pleasing to you. We give you all the praise and we give you all the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
May be seated. Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk, feel please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire, here. Councilmember Merkin, here. Councilmember Taylor, here. Deputy Mayor Bernard, here. Mayor Anderson, here. We have a quorum.
All right, anything under item number four?
No, thank you.
Okay. Item number five, we have the employee longevity recognition.
We'd like to recognize Michael Marks tonight. He's our right-of-way coordinator. He's been with the city for twenty years.
All right.
Not able to be here personally, but we wanted to recognize him anyway for his service.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. All right, we have the consent agenda. This will be items six through nine. Is there anything from the consent agenda the council wishes to remove? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda of numbers six through nine.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Merkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number ten, this will be the second reading in a public hearing for ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five.
An ordinance of the city of Avon Park, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Avon Park, Florida, specifically amending the portion of one parcel of land, parcel number A dash twenty-two dash thirty-three dash twenty-eight dash oh one oh dash zero zero six zero dash zero 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 zero, comprising of plus or minus one point one nine acres. Address being three oh four West Pleasant Street, Avon Park, Florida, three three eight two five. Generally located on the north side of West Pleasant Street between North Central Avenue and Ferguson Avenue from the zoning of P I, Public Institutional to P U D, Plan Unit Development, providing for serbility, providing for conflict, and providing for effective date.
We have Jeff here from CFR P C.
Uh, good evening, council. Jeff Schmucker, Regional Planning Council. Um, I just got a brief overview of this, uh, this, uh, this item. Second reading tonight, request by Ignite Wireless and City Switch requesting a rezone of one point nine acres, one point one nine acres. Uh, property owned by City of Avon Park located three oh four West Pleasant Street. Uh, purpose of this request is to accommodate the, uh, construction of a telecommunications facility. Um, current future land use on the property today is, uh, public buildings. The zoning of P I, Public Institutional. Request here is to go a, um, a P U D zoning.
Jeff, you're covering the.
Portion of the property. Do I need to hold it closer? Okay, I got you.
They're very cheap microphones.
Gotcha. This is a new one for me. He's holding the microphone up here. Um, in your packages and in the presentation, I believe that you have a copy of, um, there's site selection and. Predicted, uh, coverage area. Um, as you'll see in the left side, that's the current coverage today. Um, with the proposal to go to P U D for the, for the wireless facility, the map on the right hand. I thought I was, I thought I was not covering it. Yeah, come on up. I'll talk while she's doing that. Okay, I think I got it. Um, so again, the covered, the coverage, if this is proposed tonight, uh, will cover the portion of the city, uh, where the proposal is, as you can see on the, uh, map on the right-hand side. Uh, real briefly, just in terms of compatibility and impacts on public facilities, um, applicant did coordinate with, um, uh, Federal Aviation Administration, Avon Park Airport, as well as the Avon Park Air Force Range, received uh, no objections from those entities. Um, also provided a letter from a registered engineer indicating a fall zone of thirty-four feet in the event of a tower failure, uh, which is within the confines of the project area on the site. Additionally, the applicant is coordinated with Highlands County Sheriff's Office for access purposes. Um, based on the proposed use of the site, uh, no negative impacts on public facilities and services. Ultimately, in conclusion, it's compatible with the area, compatible with surrounding properties, um, on this site as well as the, the greater region. Uh, just real briefly, uh, applicant did submit the P U D or submit the master development plan as part of the P U D process. It's been reviewed by staff, meets all requirements for P U D zoning. Um, and conditions of approval, uh, as outlined at the first reading, uh, we can go through those if you need to, but P U D conditions of development approval are also established. Um, with that, those are all consistent with the master development plan. Um, if this is approved tonight on second reading, then we would move forward to construction review. So any questions you have tonight, we'll, we'll stand to answer this.
Do you have anything before we open the public hearing? Okay, all right. This will be a public hearing for ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-five. That public hearing is now open for ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue can now do so. Seeing no immediate hands or speakers, uh, public hearing for ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five is now closed. Does any council member have any questions or concerns?
I, I have one concern. I talked to a couple of, uh, pilots to fly in and out of the airport. And I brought this up at the, at the last meeting that this gentleman was here, and I believe other people did also. And, uh, I, I, I highly recommend that we put a beacon on top. I know what you've talked about, whether the, uh, it's required or not, or whether it may or may not be, uh, letting, uh, certain, uh, people flying in thinking that they're too low or too high. Uh, but, uh, the opinions that I got by those that use the airport on a regular basis, they, they believe that they'd rather have the beacon on there. So when they fly over, they know they're in the right direction. And they're never going to be concerned at that height because they should never be lower than five hundred feet. And so as well as my constituent Shelley said that, uh, as you go out there and do regular maintenance, there's no reason why you can't check the maintenance to see if the light is working. So I don't think it's, uh, unless it's a matter of expense. I don't see the reason why we can't put a beacon on there if the, uh, people that use the airport want it. I think we should have it, and I would strongly suggest that, uh, you consider that tonight. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Um, I do have the same, same con- I, I have the same feeling as Jim. I've seen some of those airplanes over on that side and I haven't put my tape measure up in the air, but they sure do seem really, really low. Um, and the other thing I'm really concerned with and more, I'm more upset with is the camouflage decor needed to create a pleasant aesthetic. And I know they said that it messes with the five G or has the potential to, to interfere with the five G, but when I see other cities doing it and other towns doing it, I just can't imagine that they would have that big of an issue with it.
I'm not sure that people will be able to see that though, Sally.
What?
I mean, actually, when I drive up close to the street, I never look right towards that sheriff's building.
Well, until you, until it's there and you know it's there.
Maybe if it had a light on, I might notice.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything?
I can just briefly speak to the, um, the F A A. We provided a response to that in connection with the planning and zoning question. Um, as to that issue, uh, the bigger concern that we have is that it circumvents the town's code by having that done. The town's code states that, um, the tower should not be lit unless it's required by the F A A or to sure, um, safety. And we provided with our packet a letter from the F A, which is a determination of no hazard, um, to air navigation. And in that letter, it stated that based on this evaluation, marking and lighting are not necessary for aviation safety. And again, the town's code itself, its ordinance, which we cited in our response, which is Land Development Code three point zero eight zero eight H thirteen, states that it should not, it prohibits lighting unless the F A requires it or if it's needed for safety. And the, the F A letter provides that that isn't meant to negate that prohibition of not marking or lighting it.
Yeah.
So there could be one. You're just saying that the F A doesn't recommend one.
No, the, um, the F A letter, just, uh, sorry, done, yell, the microphone. The F A letter says, based on this evaluation, marking and lighting are not necessary. So it's not that, yeah.
No wonder we thought it was necessary.
Well, there's also a letter from Mr. Powell that's stating that there's no issue from the Avon Park Airport. So I, I think that the concerns are unwarranted.
Well, I, well, I did talk to Mr. Powell. He said it would be nice if there was one on there, though.
I don't, I don't see the letter attached in here or the response. Uh, I saw all the letters that you just, um, said, but you had a response on here where you thought it may confuse individuals because you normally it is placed at two hundred feet or above. So I guess my kind of concern is if we already have it in our code saying that the lights are prohibited. And then they're saying that lights are usually only put at two hundred or above or above. Are we open, opening the city up to liability with putting something that's under that that goes against the code and goes against the recommendations of the F A?
Okay, I'll, I'll accept that point.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, sir.
We have a, I'll go ahead and make a motion. We approve the second reading of ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Merkin?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, item number eleven, this would be ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty-five.
An ordinance admitting the future land use map of the city of Avon Park, Florida, specifically amending four parcels of land comprising plus or minus six, two hundred and sixty-six point forty-four acres, generally located between U S Highway twenty-seven and Memorial Drive on the south side of Davis Citrus Road. From future land use of county residential low to city medium density residential, transmitting said amendment to the Board of Commerce. I think it's the Florida Department of Commerce, isn't it? Uh, and, uh, for finding of compliance, providing for serbility and providing for effect date. Looks like the Florida Department, Department's missing.
Jerry, yours confused as we with the name of it, but they generally just go by Florida Commerce and it's one word. I think I even put a space in there, so I don't know if that's even correct.
Forget about the department then.
Got it. Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, I appreciate it. So I'm going to go through this one a little bit slower, but I, I won't kill you. Um, I know we don't have the screens up tonight, but I'll try to, to illustrate this as best as possible, especially for the, for the public. Um, I believe you all have copies of the presentation so you can see the, the photos and the maps. Okay, so, um, I'm going to give an overview of both. There's, there's actually companion rezoning to this, um, in addition to the future land use, uh, short title that the attorney just read. Um, but this is a request by Pollos and Bennett LLC on behalf of property owner Regent Street LLC. Uh, requesting future land use map amendment and rezoning four parcels of land comprising, uh, plus or minus two hundred and sixty-six acres. Generally located, uh, between U S twenty-seven Memorial Drive, just south of Davis. Hello? Okay, just making sure. I don't think I'm covering the, the thing. Um, purpose of this request is to facilitate a multi-phased, age-restricted residential development. Um, it's called Lotus View to serve up to eight hundred dwelling units consisting of both single-family attached and single-family detached. Now explain why that's important to emphasize that. Um, as well as, uh, open space, common open space recreational areas, uh, new infrastructure, including a, uh, new collector roadway connecting Memorial Drive and U S twenty-seven. So the subject parcels today, they've got a, uh, county future land use of low, uh, residential low, which allows up to three dwelling units per acre. And a county zoning of E U P D, which is the county's estate district and includes a planned development overlay, which respects the underlying future land use of three dwelling units per acre. So just a little background on the E U P D that was assigned back in the county in two thousand and eight. Um, it was for a similar development. It was a proposal at that time for just over a thousand units, uh, which included the four subject parcels that are part of this, uh, this request and several additional parcels, but they also served a mix of single-family attached and single-family detached, uh, units as part of that proposal. That project never commenced. In two thousand and sixteen, the city annexed these properties, uh, into the city. Um, future land use and zoning were never assigned, but the development order still remained in effect, and actually it just sunsetted, uh, this past year. So the proposal here is to sign a future land use of city medium density residential, which would allow up to sixteen dwelling units an acre. That would equate to an allowance of forty-two hundred dwelling units. However, um, the applicant is also requesting a zoning of planned unit development, serving a maximum of eight hundred dwelling units based on the two hundred and sixty-six acres that would equate to a residential density, again, of three dwelling units per acre across these four, four properties. The reason for the medium density residential as opposed to the low-density residential, the three dwelling units per acre is what would be proposed on the site with the eight hundred units. The low-density residential would cover that because the city's low-density residential allows up to six dwelling units an acre. The reason we had to go to a medium-density residential is in the comp plan, there's, there's a specific policy that says for low-density residential can only serve single-family detached units, so your standard single-family home. The comp plan under the, the low-density residential does not allow for the single-family attached, town homes, um, anything outside of your single-family detached standard home. So that's the purpose for going to the medium-density residential. For other reasons, going to the PUD uh, was the right direction to go, but ultimately also for respecting of that density to make sure that we're not allowing a density on this property that could essentially reach that forty-two hundred units. The PUD also helps regulate that density or the future development on the site, which is proposed at the eight hundred dwelling units, uh, total for the site. So I just wanted to be clear on why, why the applicant was, uh, pursuing a, a medium density as opposed to low-density. Um, in terms of consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, uh, the pro- proposal meets a number of goals, objectives, and policies. Uh, in the future land use element, it targets policies aimed at providing for orderly growth, affordable housing options, discouraging urban sprawl, developing for compatibility with surrounding areas, um, developing for consistency with, uh, availability of infrastructure to serve the proposed development. In terms of the cer- the traffic circulation element, it targets policies that ensure coordination with appropriate agencies to provide safe and efficient transportation and mobility options, including bicycle and pedestrian facilities that'll meet adopted level of service standards with the proposed development. In the conservation element, uh, the proposal addresses compatible development improvements both onsite and site, um, that will protect and conserve natural resources, including improvements, supporting alternative mobility options through bicycle and pedestrian facilities, targeting policies specifically to help reduce vehicle needs. Again, this being an age-restricted community, uh, sidewalks, multi-use paths, everything being fully connected, not just within the site, but to the outside of the site. Uh, hoping that that will also aid in, um, not making a, uh, exclusive vehicle need for, for the residents on the site. Policy being reducing and protecting air quality in the conservation element. Um, also targets, um, a number of goals, objectives, and policies in the recreation and open space. This being a P U D, as you all are aware, thirty percent open space and recreational amenities have to be provided on the site. So when we look at land use changes, zoning changes, future development, we want to make sure that there's enough recreation in the city to support all that new development. Because it's a P U D, a lot of this is going to be captured on the site, so no, no issues there. Okay, so in terms of land use compatibility, again, uh, the site being located, uh, between U S twenty-seven and Memorial Drive, U S twenty-seven to the west, Memorial Drive to the east. The U S twenty-seven corridor essentially being that commercial service business mix of uses. To the north of the site, you've got grovelands, um, that still have county agricultural zoning on them. To the south, you have a mix of existing single-family, multifamily residential based on calculations that we ran in-house. All of that development down there is about three and a half dwelling units per acre, so consistent with the, the request here at three units an acre. And then to the east of the site, on the west side of Memorial, but to the east of the site, um, directly abutting the property of, uh, Memorial Elementary School and a number of additional properties there that are also still grove today, uh, but all having county, uh, land use and zoning designations that support three dwelling units per acre. So again, hammering that a little bit, it's in your, it's in your, your package in the report. The proposal here with the eight hundred units, a three dwelling units an acre, is consistent with everything that's happening around this, this site. With exception of the U S twenty-seven corridor, obviously, which is more of a com- a commercial service corridor. Uh, but generally consistent with the, uh, the rest of the surrounding area. So in terms of impacts on public facilities and services, um, in coordination with city utilities, uh, there's available infrastructure and capacity about the city's water and wastewater systems to serve development, and that's based on volumes coordinated between the applicant and the city. City also has confirmed ability to, uh, provide trash removal. In regards to traffic impacts, um, as part of the development proposal, there is a new, uh, collector road that's proposed from Memorial Drive. It'll traverse through the, the center of the, the, the project area, and it'll connect with U S twenty-seven. As part of their initial, um, submittal, uh, to staff, uh, there was a traffic, traffic assessment, including a signal warrant analysis and intersection control evaluation. Those are just studies essentially looking at those connections where they would be at, uh, uh, D O T facility on U S twenty-seven, county facility on Memorial Drive. Uh, based on, uh, Highlands County, city, D O T review, all have determined that there's no significant issues at this time to delay proceeding with the, the proposed land use and zoning that's in front of you. There will still be additional review on this. In fact, we'll talk about the conditions in a moment. There is a series of conditions and, and comments that have been provided through the review over the last year or so on this project. Uh, all of those things are going to have to be met, the improvements that are going to have to be met, additional studies that are going to have to be met. So this isn't the end of the road from a transportation review perspective.
Jeff, is that can include that Davis Citrus Road connector, that, that section of road they're going to connect to being improved? Because I know the county is pushing back on that.
Yeah, and we've coordinated with the county. So there's a portion of Davis Citrus Road. Um, if we're looking at this site, the, the northeast portion of Davis Citrus Road, um, that right-of-way area, this new collector road will overtake that portion of Davis Citrus Road. Where Davis Citrus Road continues as you go to the west, um, this new collector road will, will have some form of a, a connection or an alignment that, that goes up to, to connect back into it for the properties that, that sit to the west of this area, but.
But the, uh, county is saying we're going to have to own that property, is that, that roadway, and I, and I'm, I'm concerned about the condition of that road.
So, yeah.
I'm out, but possibly Dr. Kelly can speak to it better than I can.
Well, and, and let me just say this before she jumps in. So the entire collector roadway will be dedicated over to the city. So that will be owned and maintained by the city, the new collector roadway. The small portions of Davis Citrus Road in that northeast portion, where this new collector road would, would overtake or be synonymous with that portion of the right-of-way, that would be the city, and the county is willing to give that, give that over. But it would be improved as part of this project.
The Davis Citrus, what part it would be, all the way to twenty-seven?
Not all the way to twenty-seven, no. So it would be that the northeast portion where it connects with Memorial Drive.
And it goes, then it goes, um, east. And that curve, that curves, uh, north, right?
It runs west and then it runs south before it turns and goes out to U S twenty-seven. Yep.
So this portion is what the county, okay.
Any other questions on the, the roadway?
I think, okay, it's probably, probably to be discussed later because we have to deal with the county with regard to this issue.
Absolutely. Yep.
I do have one question, if you don't mind me interrupting. What part of all this is going to be fifty-five and over?
Hard to hear you.
Is part of this going to be fifty-five and over, all of it or part of it?
This is a fifty-five and older. It's an age-restricted community. That's what's proposed.
Community is going to be that way.
Correct.
Is it going to be private gated?
Uh, so it's, it's, it's proposed that it could be. Um, I think right now. I think right now that's the assumption is that the, we call them pods, if you will. So the collector roadway that runs through, as these developments may develop in phases within it, those developments may be gated.
Okay. One, one last question. You went over all the different sites. What's the maximum amount of units per acre at any location?
Three dwelling unit. Well, it's a total of 800 for the entire PUD. So as long as they don't exceed that for the 266 acres, if they get a certain number in, in one area.
But there could be more than six in one acre at one some location? I was trying to listen to your breakdown and.
It's, I don't know that it would be possible to get to over six units to the acre with that. But as long as the full density does not exceed three dwelling units per acre, that's something we can discuss though. That is not a condition that's in there. That if any phase that comes in must respect the three dwelling units an acre, that might handcuff them a little bit. But I think based on a full analysis of the site as a whole, as long as we don't exceed a three.
That's why that's what the attached units for, that way it'll give you more units per acre. And they'll probably have like groups of three or four attached homes together for one unit.
And that could be, it'd almost be like clustering to have some greater density in one portion. If that seems to suffice and the market supports that, and then you might have less density in another area, so long as gross.
Okay. So they have a specific, specific areas where they're going to do what anything yet?
Nope. And we've left that open again because of the market, right? We, we had asked those same questions. Yep.
Very much.
You still on the PUD, PUD master development plan? As I'm looking at the transportation and traffic, it say no significant transportation issue. Improvement will be required. It say no significant transportation issue, but it don't say nothing about no significant traffic issue. I'm concerned about the memorial traffic because if I was living in the area that you're describing, I wouldn't hardly go to 27 to get to Sebring because I know that 27 is, is busy, is going to get busier and I would take memorial. That's a lot of traffic to be, memorial has a whole lot of traffic coming down it already. So now you got that development coming down memorial. What is the plan for memorial and traffic?
So the traffic assessment that was provided and reviewed by our staff, city staff, county and DOT, there's plenty of capacity available on all of the surrounding roadway networks right now. So it does not impede a level of service for what those roadways can, can serve today. Now that's going to continue to be reviewed. There may be turn lanes or other improvements that need to be made, made from an operational standpoint to make sure that there aren't further backups as this development starts to come online. But the study, as it's been provided today, reviewed and accepted by all of those entities, there is capacity available on the surrounding roadway network. So there's, there's not an issue today. Nothing significant to, to not move this forward at this point. That was the determination by the transportation folks.
Really?
Yes, ma'am. And it's in, and you, we didn't put the study in here. It's a very lengthy study, but I think we note in there that if you, if you would like a copy of that, we can certainly send that to you.
I mean, I'm not with Florida Department of Transportation or any of that, but I got enough sense to know that you're going to build a development that big and you got memorial that close to that, to that development that memorial is not going to be used very heavily. And so for you not to see any issues with that, unless and you got another plan to reroute traffic in all different directions, they're going to use memorial. Memorial is pretty much a residential for, for a, a, a lot, for a, a big part of it. And there's traffic that's coming through right now that I believe they shouldn't be coming through there. I mean, people walk, use cross, you know, they cross memorial all the time, at least on the south side. And now you finna build a development that close to memorial and you don't think it's an issue? That you, 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 you don't see an issue up front?
Not my determination to make that, but, but I will, I will, I will say this with the, with a new collector roadway, you, you will now have a new extension or new connection between memorial and 27 that doesn't exist today. I think part of the study, and again, I'm not an expert in this and I did not review this, but there are portions of memorial where some of that traffic will probably come off, especially with, with folks to the north that'll come, may use that new collector roadway to get out to 27 that aren't going to continue down memorial to the south as they probably do today. So there's probably some give and take to that. When they do the analysis, they look at an extensive area. I think it's at least a mile or maybe several miles to make sure what are the impacts on all of the surrounding roadway networks that are classified, meaning they've got traffic counts. So we know how much volume is on that road today. How much can it serve? That's the capacity side of this. So based on the experts who have reviewed this, there's, there's plenty of capacity at this time to serve this project. It doesn't mean that there's not improvements that need to be made that looking at where these folks are probably going to travel to help make sure that they're, they're mitigated. So we don't have any issues on those roadways in the future. For instance, a, a turn lane. So you don't have traffic backing up on memorial with new folks that are trying to get into this development. That may be warranted. I don't know, but that'll be part of the review when it gets into a site development phase.
Well, I, I don't know about Ms. Taylor, but I've lived here my whole life. I avoid 27 at every cost. So if they built a nice, pretty aesthetically pleasing side road to get to 27, still wouldn't use it. Still wouldn't what? Still wouldn't use it. I'd stay on the back roads. I try to avoid 27 at all costs. And do you know when they did this traffic analysis?
We can go back and look at file. It was, it was within the last year.
Okay. But what were the months that it was take, was it during the months when our winter friends are up north? Or was it when they were here?
Yep. That I don't know. I don't know that they actually went out and did traffic counts during a time of the year. I think they based it on, generally I think they do it on averages. But again, it's been vetted by the county who runs the concurrency review for the city. So.
And that's fine. And they're the professionals and they've got the numbers and letters behind their names and I don't, but those are my questions. And then this community, will it have an HOA?
There's the option to have the HOA and actually an HOA would most likely be the case because there's going to be a number of common areas. Yes.
So just so everybody knows, in Avon Park, Sebring and Lake Placid, there are 36 55 and over communities in Avon Park. So my question is, do we want to bring in another 55 and older community? Or do we want to maybe shoot for workforce housing for single, for families? Families who can afford a house to get a house. You know, there's a lot of kids, like a lot of youth that have gone on to create families other places. And then they're coming back here, but they're finding that they can't find housing because either one, it's in a deed restricted, they are not in a deed, they want to, don't want to be in a deed restricted. Or two, they can't afford it. Or three, it's 55 and over. So I don't know.
I don't think that you steer that ship.
I don't steer that ship.
You want a 55 plus community or do you want nothing?
Bridge, they have to go through a different route. I sure will.
Is any representative from the company here?
We do, we do have Paulus and Bennett here as well as their legal representation. Do you want me to just finish the, I can answer the question though, real quick. And then that did come up at the planning and zoning board about the 55 and older. If there's a need to come back, I mean, the market's going to dictate if they, if it works for them. If it doesn't work for them, they can come back. They can amend that. We can open it up. It could be the same development, not 55 and older. There'll be some additional review, have to make sure that we coordinate with schools. I mean, there's additional impacts that go with that. But again, just from circumstantial evidence for, for future land use and zoning, just based on the impacts, that's what's in front of you today. But I mean, that did come up and it can be addressed in the future. Just real briefly, let me, unless you all have any other questions on this. I mean, I know it's the, this future land use tonight, this is a transmittal, a, a public hearing. So this one, this one, we do have to open up for public hearing from the land use standpoint. If we want to hear it, I think you've heard most of it already. There is a master development plan. There's conditions that go with it. If you all have any questions on that, we can certainly answer that. But we do have representation. So if you all have any questions, we can stand to answer those from here.
If it's going to be a public hearing, we'll go ahead and open that up if you're done.
Sure. We're, I think we're good. Yeah.
You still have some questions though.
Well, let's go ahead and open up for the public so we can make sure we fill all the criteria here. All right. Public hearing for ordinance number 14 dash 2025 is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue can now do so. See one hand in the back, one in the front. You'll, you'll have to come up to the microphone, please. Just give your name and address for the record and then state your question.
I'm Dr. George Grace. I live at 905 Interest Road, Avon Park, Florida.
Yes, sir.
I, I was just listening to the gentleman's report in the back and city needs to be concerned about improving roads down the line. If you're gonna, if you're gonna okay this, there needs to be some impact fees to protect the city. Because if it's down the line, part of that land belongs to the city without the county, the city is going to wind up paying for an additional roadway.
Do I have to state my name?
Yes, you do.
Sarah Piple, 100 East Main Street. So yes, I am a real estate agent and you're probably going to be shocked by what I say about tonight. I am all for housing. I'm all for workforce housing. But I feel I'm, I'm asking you guys to serious, seriously consider this. 800 homes at two people per home is 1,600 bodies that you're going to have there over the next couple of years. I know they're doing it in phases. You need to ask yourself, can the city of Avon Park have the infrastructure to support that many more people? I'm all for growth. Yeah. I believe we should all, you know, we're going, we're going to grow. We're going to move forward, but it has to be sustainable growth. You're going to have a burden on your EMS. You will have your burden on 911 because they say, well, that's all EMS. It's senior people. I'm a senior. And you know, I'm saying, we really don't need another 55 and over community. I spoke to, excuse me, I spoke to Mark Goes, who is the builder at the villages of Highlands Ridge, which is only a couple of miles from here. And he has said several builders, because you had mentioned that at the planning and zoning that you were, the developer was going to develop this property and then you were going to open it up to builders to come and build. He's not going to build himself. That's what you said at that meeting. So Marcos has no interest in building any more 55 and overs because he has 209 ready to go lots in the villages and that's in Avon Park. And he can't sell them and he's got water, sewer, electric, everything to it. He can't sell it. He also built three spec homes that he hasn't been able to sell. And that's just one community. There are actually 38 other communities in Highlands County that are for 55 and over. Out of that, there is 507 homes for sale right now, as of this morning on Zillow in, in 55 and over communities. So right now it's a buyer's market. We're probably, I can't say if it's going to be a buyer's market, you know, a year from now or two years from now, but I think it's going to put a burden on the infrastructure in Avon Park to add that many units all at once. And also we need more family, you know, workforce. I would say 200 of those and maybe another 200 apartments. We need those desperately. That's just my opinion. And my question is, and I know the answer to this because you answered, did you do a market analysis to see if a 55 and over community was needed in this county?
Our answer is the same here. We did not do a market analysis. It's not part of the review. It's not necessary and it doesn't have substantial evidence to support the land use for the zoning. The applicant, we asked early on, did they put one together? I don't know that we ever got to an answer, but that was their proposal. And like we said before, if this is something that the market doesn't support, they can come back. They can amend the putt. It can be affordable housing. It could be general housing. I mean, we, we cannot get into that in terms of land use and zoning. That is not substantial to a land use and a zoning review. I think the other question that was asked is if the developer is going to build the homes. I don't remember providing an answer on that. I think maybe the representation from the, from the, the owner or the applicant said generally, and I think this is pretty typical in most places, the developers don't do the homes, they develop and then they sell to a builder who then builds the homes. So whether they're going to do that or not, again, I just wanted to just answer that. Not substantial to when we're reviewing land use and zoning. I'm not trying to discount the questions, but making a decision based on if a developer or builder is going to build it and/or does the market support it are two vastly different things. And we, we cannot make a recommendation or we cannot review based on those facts. So I just wanted to make sure we're answering that question, but letting you all know.
Understood. Is there anybody else in the, for the public hearing?
Regardless of what the outcome is tonight, Maria Sutherland, 900 West Main. Have you all looked at the ISO to see what would change and how it's going to affect the rest of the residents and our insurance rates? We don't have, as we know, a good ISO as it is right now. We will need an expansion of our fire department at some point, which will be millions of dollars. And I think it needs to be considered that if we are going to have an affected ISO to where the rating is going to drop to our insurance is going to go up, that means that the city residents will be subsidizing a new fire department that includes fire staff, pension obligations, et cetera, et cetera. And how, how are you going to remedy that? Is there an opportunity for us to at least see whether or not this developer would be willing to donate a piece of land for future use for a new fire department should we need it? Or whether it's a county fire department or some type of, you know, hybrid situation. But I think it's very important to have that. And if so, you know, is that something again, that the developer would be willing to do? You know, you can get appropriations, grants are really tough to build a new fire department, but appropriations are pretty easy. So you know, that's an opportunity as well. And the commitment there that they would be willing to give us good property for that. The other thing also is, is that the city owns drying ponds to the northwest of this development. And they're not actually, as far as I know, being used yet, but they're for future development. They may stink in the future if they are used. And are we going to have any problems with a developer, you know, complaining about this smell despite the fact that they bought the property right next door to it? And then the other part of it is on the roads, did you say that the city is going to have those roads deeded to them by the county? Or by the developer?
It, it's still in conversation. So there's a portion that will, the new road owned, maintained by the city. There's portions of that that are currently county that the county would hand over as part of that.
Would, would they be access for just the development or is it for the public in general? All right. Cause I know a lot of people go out there and exercise as well. And there's going to be another development eventually on the lake up there because there's some property owned up there on the northwest as well, that they're going to be looking to develop soon. So the other question I had was point in the past, we have had issued deed restricted properties where our garbage trucks go in and tear up the roads and then the developer comes back or their deed restricted group come back and say, you fix it, you pay for it. And then they end up, you know, giving us that property and we end up having to maintain those roads. Is there going to be any clause in there that says that, you know, we are not responsible? We have big garbage trucks. Are we going to be responsible for tearing up their streets if we build? Um, that's another expense that would be the burden on the rest of the residents because I don't see the price being built with 800 homes, you know, in 800 days. It's going to be years and years and years away. But nonetheless, future thinking, we have a problem with a development that was up here off of Lake Avenue. They ended up deeding the streets and we tried to get their homeowners association to pay a fee. No one paid a thing. The city ended up having to maintain those roads or full of potholes and things. And we get the complaints all the time about how the city doesn't maintain it, but it was never ours to start with. So those are my three. Thanks.
You want to address any of that or?
Well, let me address the last one. So those are obviously conversations. We would have a time of plating in the infrastructure improvements. The case for this would be that the, the collector roadway would be handed over to the city once it's designed and it's built. It would have to be built to your engineering standards, right? So that would be a public use roadway. Anything interior that would remain private generally would also have to be built to the city's standards. While it may remain private and it's owned, maintained, and it's the responsibility of an HOA, if at some point it were to be dedicated over, the city wants to know that it's built to the city's standards. So those are all things that we would have to review at time of development, but typically that's, that's the case. those are all things that we would have to review at time of development, but typically that's, that's the case. You might have to remind me if there were some other questions there. Um, now the fire department, we did coordinate with, with fire and police. We actually had a nice long meeting with the sheriff's office. Uh, didn't know that they had a number of different departments from design perspectives, crime prevention. We had all of those folks on a call, had no issues. This is definitely in an area where they feel that they could serve it today. Now, let's keep in mind, eight hundred units aren't going to come out of the ground overnight. It's going to take time. Um, you might have a number, three or four different phases of this development. There could be a point in time in the future when one of the visions comes in where the conversation comes up, we may not be able to support that. Meaning it wouldn't be concurrent with what our services can provide. That absolutely would have to be addressed. And those, those types of things are always addressed when we have development review meetings. Um, we bring those folks into the room. If there's an issue when one of those developments comes in that there is no way we're going to be able to facilitate this. Yes, you've got the entitlement in, in terms of the number of units you can provide, generally how the layout's going to be. But it's where the rubber meets the road when they come in to subdivide these properties out where we have the detailed conversations. They make sure that full concurrency is met. You hear me over and over when I come before you. Um, it meets, you know, public facilities and services. It's concurrent with this. It meets level of service. But I always put the caveat that that is going to be reviewed in more detail at time of site development or at time of subdivision plat. Because today we can say it's great. When it comes in, this development may not kick off for four years. The one that was approved in the county in two thousand and eight never kicked off. Um, when it comes in, situations and conditions might change out there. The traffic conditions on twenty-seven might change. The traffic conditions on Memorial might change. Which is why we, we look at it today, but we always put the caveats in and we have the, the conditions in there that all of these things require additional review at time of development, at time of subdivision plat.
Yeah. Anyone else on the the uh, public hearing? Seeing no other speakers for the public hearing, public hearing for ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty-five is now closed. Counsel, have any questions?
I do. Uh, first of all, uh, article just came out today that the county realizes that the growth is expanding so quickly that they are estimating the increasing their fire assessment from the county from a hundred and sixty-five dollars per home, residential home, to two hundred dollars for the next year. So they've already seen an increase in growth in the county. They realize that there's probably going to have to be an increase in their fire department also. And that's a very large increase that the county is going to ask for. So that's definitely an option, a thing that we definitely need to look at. And the other thing I need to think we need to step to look at is our water and sewer department. Uh, I mean, the fact that we're already worried about the fact that having to build out maybe a possible another uh, whole addition to our water treatment plant that somehow impact fee may come into effect with a unit this large. So those are two large expenses that definitely need to be looked at. I know you, this is sort of preliminary. But I'm just bringing them to your attention that uh, these need to be addressed before we get, you know, too close to anything else. And I understand there's a lot of questions, a lot of worries and problems, concerns. I think every habit. I think the next time the citizens will hear about it, they may speak up too. But uh, I think we need to go back to the developer and mention to them those issues and see what they're willing to do to make adjustments, not just uh, we might do this, we might do that in maybe four years, maybe ten years and so on, so forth. Uh, it's going to have to be, uh, in my opinion, maybe a limited approval for a certain amount. And then as the phases go, they'll have to be done and limited too, as far as approval. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a few comments. Um. First of all, I mean, we hire Central Florida Regional Planning um for their experience and their expertise. And I feel like when they when they do a project, I mean, the, the packets that you've been providing lately are so beefed up. I feel like you've gone through every single every single part of the land development code and our comprehensive plan and all that kind of good stuff and answered all of these questions beforehand. Um, but it's not a city-owned property. So it's not like we went out to bid and we're, we're choosing, okay, who do we want to come in? What do we want them to build or whatever? This was private property. And so we have a developer that came in and, and purchased this private property and they're willing to put this, this housing development on it. The representative, because I was at the planning and zoning meeting last time. So the representative clearly stated that they constantly monitor the market. So as far as like whether it needs to stay, stay fifty-five plus, if they want to do something lower or whatever. They are constantly monitoring that because they want to recoup their costs, right? They're in it for for profit, right? So there, it's for their benefit to constantly monitor those types of things. Um, and I felt like, you know, she was genuine in that. But even a fifty-five plus, it's just one person has to be fifty-five to even live there unless the HOA for some reason prohibits anybody else. I mean, that's I might be getting older, but that's still young in my opinion. I feel like I'm getting closer to that number. Um, so I don't feel like it's, um, you know, necessarily a bad thing. The other thing is our area relies on the fifty-five plus community. I mean, our economy is it, it relies on what they, they inject. I've seen so many posts on Facebook and I've talked to so many businesses, so many restaurants, hairdressers. I mean, during the summertime, their businesses suffer greatly when, when the, the winter residents are down here and the fifty-five plus are down here. That's when our economy booms. And that's how it's been my entire, you know, life that I've lived in Highlands County. We rely on that and I appreciate, you know, them choosing our area, you know? Um, as, as, as far as even volunteering, when I used to, when I was a teenager, I volunteered at the hospital. Guess what all the candy strippers were?
Fifty-five?
The oldest, the, the lady that ran the volunteer department was ninety-four. Ninety-four. I was a teenager and she ran circles around all of us and she would go from the top story to the bottom story, but it's all retirees. Um, in our school system, guess who? All the ones that come and volunteer for our school system. It's the retirees because they have the time. As far as pumping money back into our economy, even if they are on a fixed budget, they're usually going to still go to the restaurants. They're going to still go get their hair done. They're still going to purchase cars. They're, you know, because they for one thing, their healthcare is usually covered. For another thing, they don't have families to support. You know, so I feel like it's a, it's a big infusion into our area. The other thing is I, I feel like Central Florida Regional Planning has made them check off every single box as far as, as meeting with our city's plan. And I feel like if we if we deviate from that and we say, okay, we're just not going to approve it because I don't want a fifty-five plus. I feel like that puts us a huge red target on our back as a city. Because we're, my understanding is we're usually mandated to go along with something that goes along with our codes. And if we're saying no, we're not wanting to because we want something for younger folks, which there is the Avon Park Apartments that's coming in. That's three hundred apartments. That's not an age restriction thing. That's a, um, an income level thing, and that should be coming up pretty shortly. The other thing is, is like the lady said last time, um, the representative is this thing is going to take years to develop. So they're going to do a little bit, see how it goes, do a little bit, see how it goes. And, and then part of the thing that I like that you mentioned last time, which I don't think we talked about tonight is um, as far as like the recreational portions of it. They're not just going to build homes and then not build out the recreation. They're required to build the recreation in with the home. So if they, if they start with this one section and they've got homes and they've got the recreation and they feel like, okay, that's it. Let's not expand beyond that. Then you've already got a well-built community. You don't just have homes without the rest of it. You know, I feel like they've kind of put them through a rigorous process as far as making sure that it's going to be for Avon Park's benefit, not just a developer's benefit.
I actually don't have that much of a problem with fifty-five and over, but I do have a question. I know a lot of communities that have developments like that. They have, we're required like anywhere is up to twenty percent of the units can be, don't have to be fifty-five and over. Is that part of this plan?
Florida statute, we've leaned on Florida statute. I think there has to be at least one person per household that's over fifty-five living in the household. Um, they're, as part of the HOA, when they come in, we were specific about this in the conditions. The HOAs will have to reference Florida statutes. Now, whether anybody abides by these things, I mean, we find this all the time, right? I mean, will there be someone under eighteen that's living in the community? Who knows? Um, but we've put conditions in there to help protect this as best as possible because we know what happens all over the region. Um, you build something, it's supposed to be fifty-five and older, ten years down the road. Now it's young families and they've put impact on the schools and there's more impact on the roadways and all, all types of things. We've tried to be comprehensive as much as possible with this to make sure that we can try to alleviate that as much as possible. So there's several different mechanisms. One would be through the conditions. Two would be then during the review, as part of their subdivision, when they come in to plat one of these portions that the HOA that accompanies it, that has to be recorded with the county clerk's office recognizes all of these things in there. That gives teeth for code enforcement or someone to go in there and say you've got folks living in here that are underage, whether Randy wants to go and do that or not. Um, but we, we've tried to be as comprehensive about it with, without overstepping our bounds and what we can request, what we can ask for and what we can actually enforce. So, um, we have tried to answer some of those questions.
Let me just say one last thing, Jeff. I, I too, uh, want to congratulate the job that you as Central Florida Regional Planning do because we depend on you. You've been with us more than ten years, I believe. You do a great job. I think we're just up there asking questions that I think that the citizens may be concerned with. And I think that these questions are good for you to bring back to the developer. And then maybe this will make some adjustments as they, as we finally get to the point where we're going to finalize this and do the final agreement. It has nothing to do with quality of work that you do or anybody in your department. You guys have always been great. And I know that this city is dependent upon you for your experience and for your knowledge and uh, basically, uh, you know, without you, we'd be in big trouble. So thank you for all that you do.
And, and I, I'd like to say one last thing, Mr. Jeff. Um, I don't have a problem with the fifty-five and over myself. Here's the problem that I have. The problem that I have is with what would it do to our EM, EMS system? What would it do to our sewage system, our police department? Uh, what would it do to the traffic? I, I know that's all this council talks about is we want to grow, we want to expand. And I know this development is going to be done in different stages. But this development is not the only development that's being built here in Avon Park. And I know sometimes we sit here and we struggle, uh, how are we going to get a new sewage system? How are we going to pay for this and how are we going to pay for this? And I, I understand that, um, that, um, we get a certain amount of money in for different developments. Okay, I get that part. But is it going to be enough to support the things that we need to, to provide to the residents? Let's talk about just one. I'm gonna let you go. Uh, police department. I don't know if they man deputies according to um, the area in which we govern. Or do they provide us deputies according to the amount of, a number of people that we have? But we just had the sheriff department come to us and ask for us for a half a million dollars. Okay? And I know we're saying to ourselves, you know, how are we going to manage that? And so, in my mind, more people that the sheriff have to police? That means more money that the city is going to have to come out. And we're struggling trying to figure out how we're going to do that. You know, someone would probably say, we're not struggling, but it's a lot of money. And so that's my concern that we're looking at this this eight hundred unit, but it's not the only one being built in the city of Avon Park. We have other. And so what is it going to do to all the different things? How is it going to affect all the other different things that we as a council sit here and worry about from day to day?
Yep. Um, so I'll just answer that very high level. So when we go through any land use and any zoning review, we have the development review committee, which is all of the city departments. It's public works, it's utilities, sometimes a combination of them with, with staffing, uh, fire. In this case, we, we highly incorporated the sheriff's office into this project. Um, but also your traffic. So the county DOT, um, all of these folks come to the table. So we review this. When we look at this and we look at the impacts that are associated with this, does the city have the capacity to serve it? Now that's today. We know that there could be ten other land use and zoning changes coming in. New developments coming on the books today. We look at it today to see, is there capacity available? Which is why when it comes down to the development review, that's where the rubber meets the road. We've worked with this for years on water and sewer capacity reservations. This, this city is very careful to not give reservations and the, the city attorney can speak to that. There's a purpose for that. If you do that, you're cutting yourself off for anything else that's coming in the door. That development might not ever get off the ground and now you've, you've committed to them. So there's a lot of these conversations that happen at a technical level with staff. Um, when we talk about entitlements and I use that very loosely, I don't use that legally, but entitlements in terms of land use allows you to do this and the zoning is going to allow you to do this. That's fine. Until you come to the development table and you actually are ready to put a shovel in the ground. When we actually talk about what those impacts are going to be at that standpoint, that's when we have those very detailed conversations about, okay, we know that there's capacity citywide for this. But now what is this impact in this particular area? Do we have the lift stations for the sewer? Do we have the water lines for the water? Do we have the roadways to serve, you know, the, the new traffic impacts? All of that is, is, is reviewed at a detailed level at that point in time. So we take these things into consideration, but it's fairly high level. But we have to rely on the staff. If they say, yes, there is capacity and we don't see an issue at this, this time. We know that there's other things that are kind of going to come in the door while this is going on. But that's why we don't have those detailed conversations until they file that application and we have to include legal staff, for instance, and, and other folks to make sure, okay, now this is real, now this is moving forward. What are, what are we looking to do?
Yeah, we, um, with regard to water and sewer, we, 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 um, we don't let them get beyond a certain point without um, signing a contract, reserving the capacity and paying for it. But I will point out that, you know, the capacity fee that we charge now is not what, um, the the people that did the calculations told you it should be. It was actually, it's lower, substantially lower than what they recommended. So, I mean, unless you pass a capacity fee, which it recovers you, the costs associated with building a plant. You know, you are going to be stuck holding the bag with regard to a certain amount of it, but that's what, that's the, that's the choice that you all have. So when, when, um, Florida Rural Water Authority, um, comes in and and says that this is what we think the capacity fee should be. Uh, you know, you need to really think long and hard before you lower it because, um, you're afraid of, of growth because the other part of that is you'll get the growth, but then you pay for it.
Alrighty, anything else? Okay. Seeing none. Well, as I say, we are a long ways away from final. Um, I see no reason why we can't move forward at this point. We have had the public hearing. Um, so I'll make a motion, ordinance, we pass ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty-five. Looking for a second.
Well, it's preliminary. I'll say second for now.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? So as Jeff said, all the departments have been notified. They've all been talked to. There was no conflict with any of them. We do have the capacity at this point. Uh, it would be irrational to say that we do not because we, all the experts say that we do. Um, we are, we did just get a, was it eleven or fourteen million dollar grant to expand our water and sewer plant?
Eleven and a half.
Eleven and a half million dollar grant. So we are actively moving that way, which will almost double our capacity for development. Everybody seems to go on and on about why does Sebring have this and why does Sebring have that, this town and that town, et cetera, et cetera. Well, that's because Sebring said yes at the time. So these opportunities don't come along every day, as you know. Our entire point is to build up our water and sewer system, to build up our services, to build up our staff that we can handle additional growth so that we can move forward. You either move forward or you die. That's how cities work. That's how they've always worked. That's how they will always work. So we either are going to continue to grow. Yes, there may be a statement to be said about how much growth and when. But we don't get to dictate that. We're not God. We don't, we don't own this land. It's not our money. It's the, the developers that buy private pieces and they choose according to their market studies, what they want to put, where they want to put it. And we just simply see if it fits in our criteria. Obviously this does, so I fully support it. And I hope that we'll move forward to at least get to the point where we can work out that developer agreement, make sure that it is something that will work for Avon Park. Any other questions before we vote? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire? Yes. Councilmember Merkier? No. Councilmember Taylor? No. Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember Mercury, no. Councilmember Taylor, no. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
I wonder if I could ask a question of Major Hood? If you wouldn't mind. If we were to add, he would come up.
I have to get you to microphone, Mr. Hood.
I mean, I know that you're a very smart man. We appreciate you being here for most of our meetings. Just, this may or may not be your department, but if we were to add eight hundred, say, homes, how many officers do you think we need to add at Avon Park to manage that?
We really don't go off, Major Darren Hood from the Sheriff's Office of Law Enforcement Bureau. We really don't go off of residents necessarily. It's calls for service. I don't have a formula for you. It really fluctuates, but really rest is not what we base it on. It's calls for service.
Okay. Well, thank you for that answer. I knew you'd have an answer.
All right. Item number fifteen is to be ordinance fifteen, or excuse me. Item number twelve, it'll be ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty five.
In order to the city of Avon Park, Florida, amending official zoning map of the city of Avon Park, specifically amending four parcels of land comprising a plus or minus two hundred sixty-six point four four acres, generally located between US Highway twenty-seven and Memorial Drive on the south side of Davis Citrus Road. From the zoning of county EUPD to city PUD, planned unit development, providing for severability, providing for effective date.
Yep.
This is essentially the rezoning to the land use that was just voted on. So this would be the rezoning of the four parcels, the two hundred sixty-six acres from the EUPD that is currently county to the city planned unit development.
Would this be a public hearing?
This is not a public hearing tonight.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Any questions out in the audience? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember Mercury, no. Councilmember Taylor, no. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. All right, item number thirteen, this will be the first amendment to the lease agreement with City Switch. IIALC. Ms. Kelly, I see your name. Will you be presenting?
Yes, thank you. So back in November of twenty twenty four, you approved the lease with City Switch, which contemplated them moving forward with a cell tower. They have since secured their land approvals from you on item D ten this evening. In order to comport the approvals with the exhibits in the lease, it's necessary to now modify the lease exhibits and that's what this lease amendment accomplishes.
Okay. Do we have any questions on these lease amendments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve D thirteen, the first amendment to the lease agreement with City Switch two dash A LLC.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember Mercury, no. Councilmember Taylor, no. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number fourteen is to be certified playground safety inspection report. Ms. Coger.
Yes, we had a inspection done back on May twelfth. Certified inspector came out and assessed all of our playgrounds that had playground equipment on it. The report was provided. We met with city staff that oversee the playground with the certified inspector. They walked us through every item that was in the report. We were noncompliant on many issues. There were a few issues that had to be addressed pretty quickly because of the noncompliance. And that involved removing a couple of pieces of equipment from Donaldson Park that were just not even safe, salvageable. And we took out one swing over at Dura Martin Park as well. The surface level mulch was missing at most of our parks. Dura Martin being the worst. We temporarily closed that park, ordered the correct mulch, had it delivered and that's been put in place. So with that, for council in the report, I gave the breakdown of what's been completed, what we still need material and parts for. It's gonna be a process to get everything up to par. It's gonna cost money to do it. As far as the playground equipment that was removed over at Donaldson Park, there was a quote provided in the packet. And there currently is fifty-five thousand available in the Central Avenue parking lot rehabilitation that could be used towards that expense if we wanted to go ahead and replace those two pieces of equipment now. Or you could also decide to budget for the new equipment next year, next fiscal year. So it's up to you. It's kind of where we're at with it.
Well, Jessica, I'll just ask, is the, any of the Donaldson Park improvements, would that cover any of this equipment at all or?
Not at this time. No, the pickleball splash pads, that's what's on the RFP. The restrooms, new restrooms were not included in that either. So that would be separate.
Perfect. Anyone have any questions?
I do. I have some questions. So Aileen McWhite Park just went through an extensive remodel. So I'm just curious, was this inspection done after they did the remodel?
The inspection was done on May twelfth.
Okay. And when did we have the grand opening for that park? Do you remember, Dr. Kelly?
I don't off the top of my head, but
the remodel did not include any playground equipment.
Okay.
I think it was like the twentieth. I think it was close to the last week of school.
Oh, that's all I was, no, one more. Denise, I'm not, I'm not picking on you. So following question I'm about to ask you, please do not take offense.
Oh, God.
Shoot, go ahead. So you're the safety inspector. Are you trained? No, I'm not picking, okay? Just, I'm curious. Are you trained to recognize these things or do you have a manual that you follow? I'm just curious how the process works.
There is a handbook that is issued by the state that we do have. It's been provided to all the employees that work in the parks facility. They do have that. We are required to have someone who is certified in safety inspection to come out once every five years. That's what prompted this. And my role is meeting with the Parks and Recs facility team. And we're going to be meeting regularly, like once a month to say, okay, let's go back through this. What's been completed this month? What do we still have to do?
Okay. All right. That's all the questions.
Ms. Denise, did I hear you say that equipment had to be removed from the premises?
Yes.
How many pieces?
Two, two pieces. One was aged two to five and one was five to twelve years of age right over here at Donaldson Park. And then a swing set over at Dura Martin.
And so they had to be removed due to what, rust?
Yes. Yeah, I went over even to make sure. I went over with one of our parks employees and and sent it to Daniel Kelly. Because literally he would take a screwdriver and you could put it through the metal posts that are supposed to be supporting the weight. It was so rusted out. And also the, the part where the kids step on it to climb up, that whole support structure underneath was completely rusted out. You could just peel it and it'd fall apart. It would be like driving a rusted out car and your foot go through the floorboard. It was like that.
Got that.
Ms. Denise, I also like to bring attention to you and Dr. Kelly and perhaps your staff, Dr. Kelly. I get a lot of comments from mothers and grandparents who goes down to Aileen McWhite. And they are complaining, by the way, I've had three sisters who've owned daycares, okay? And I know a lot about daycare because that's all they did was talk about daycares. And so I know that they talk about the mulch. It is never enough mulch at Aileen McWhite. And because they know a lot about daycares, they said it is, it is a lawsuit waiting to happen. And they say every time they take kids down there, even the, even people that take their kids, they even know it's never enough mulch down at Aileen McWhite. And my thing I want to address to to you Denise and Dr. Kelly is is mulch worth a lawsuit? The amount of mulch, is that worth a lawsuit? Because these days you got people just looking for lawsuits.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's just something I want to stick in your head. Is not enough mulch worth a lawsuit?
No, and that's, that's part of the issue and we're we're doing a transition plan to get all of these items addressed. A line McWhite not only doesn't have enough mulch, it has the wrong kind of mulch there. So when we have the mulch delivered, the engineered wood fiber mulch that has to be there, they're going to have to rake up what's there before they put that down. So we did find a company local in Winter Haven that has the mulch at a very reasonable price. We were able to do Dura Martin for seventy-five hundred dollars for two semi trucks full of, full of the correct mulch to go in there and do. And we still have some left.
And what is the correct mulch?
It's called engineered wood fiber. It's processed differently. So regular landscaping mulch has pointed ends. It's harder. This is processed differently. So it's smaller pieces and there's no sharp points on it.
And rubber mulch can't be used.
Rubber mulch is extremely expensive. We checked into rubber mulch. We checked into the rubber matting. And one of the quotes was like to do the four parks was like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars just for the surface.
Yeah.
So I think engineered wood fiber is gonna be the way to go to put it in. And you have to put twelve inch deep and have it compressed to nine inches is the correct amount. And we are working towards that.
So this particular mulch you're talking about that is required that the city, that you think the city can afford? How long does that last? Like if you were to go and put it at Aileen McWhite, how long would that last before you think, Ms. Denise, that we'll probably need to replenish?
I think it needs to be reassessed every, every few years because of the fact when you get storms, if you don't have, if the border for whatever reason is faulty or it loses a piece, you get a flood, all that mulch is gonna run out. And so it's gonna have to be replaced.
So you're talking at least three years?
You'll have to top it, you'll have to top it off at least every year.
Yeah, with the weather that we have.
Exactly.
And how often do we have to replace rubber mulch?
That I don't know. Yeah.
Rubber mulch can last several years. It's just exponentially a lot more upfront cost. So if we could get one of those FERDA grants or one of those other things, that would be amazing because it does last a lot longer. But you can top off the mulch. So like at least, I mean, ours, we have to do it every six months. But it's, you're still not buying the entire amount. You're just topping off, you know, the first couple, the top two or three inches or whatever, but
You can use different mulch. A cheap one on the bottom and more expensive one on the top.
I'm talking about you can, you're basically refilling it. They don't have to, every year they don't have to come in and dig it all out and then replace the whole thing. They just come in with a new load and put it on top and then you, you're supposed to rake it up to keep it fluffy. It's the word I use. I don't think that's accurate, but anyway, to keep it stirred up because people will compact it down and then sand always has the tendency to rise underneath it because our rainfall is so heavy. And so it's, it's to help with that issue as well.
Have all those toddlers like get it in their shoes, give it back and save a lot of money.
So as far as the ones and twos on here, do you have any estimate of what it would take? It seemed like those are the two severe things that have to be addressed. I know the ones you took out, but is there any cost estimate on what it would take to at least take care of that?
The main part, the more urgent part is the surface level mulch to get that in and have it compliant.
And that's for all four of the parks?
And the one that's going to be the most costly, unfortunately, is going to be over here at Donaldson Park because the park slopes to the lake and they're going to have to build a wall to keep it intact so it doesn't run off into the lake.
Yes.
And you probably get more activity at Donaldson Park too.
Oh, I'm sure. Yes.
Did you say we had some funds of somewhere else where we could do that project this budget?
Yes, there's fifty-five thousand available.
Will you need a motion to approve that?
Well, so the equipment that you had quoted was like fifty-three thousand.
There would be enough to cover.
But do we need that fifty-five to pay for all of that mulch in the must haves right now?
Well, we would still need to put mulch down and build that seawall. So it just depends on what, what council would prefer to do first. I mean, you could put the equipment in there, but then you still have the issue that the surface isn't where it needs to be.
That makes sense. Put equipment in an unsafe, perfect.
Why don't we get the beds repaired first and then come back to us for the equipment?
I agree.
And then the county did say, because I noticed that the installation of that equipment was like thirty grand by the time you added both, that they installed their own and saved like seventy-five thousand at that new park right there at the college. Maybe we can ask how they did that? And do we still get our warranty if we install it ourselves?
All our own, yeah.
Okay. All right. So what motion do you need to repair the beds?
Just council advised me to do so. We can certainly
I'm sure that'll be under your twenty-five thousand, right?
For the mulch part?
Maybe. Depends. If we buy it in bulk, probably not, but if we go park by park.
Okay. So do you want us to say that's what we want you to do and then you bring a proposal back? Or just go ahead and vote?
Authorize me to buy the mulch for the four parks. That would be great.
Okay. Now make a motion to authorize city manager to purchase the correct mulch for all four parks.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Do we need to add, build the wall?
Yes, I was just gonna say that, yes, because for the whole park, there has to be some sort of retaining wall there.
And as part of that motion, it will also approve city manager to go ahead and build the necessary wall at Donaldson Park.
I'll second that too.
Okay, so I have a question about the wall. So the wall you're gonna put on the east side of where the equipment is now, the whole wall across there. So you'll add to like the little blocks that are there, right?
That, that is a question for Jared and unfortunately he's out. I don't know what his vision is for that to put something there.
Because I know that he's, they've got the little like, for lack of a better term, the Lego blocks that make the edging.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So I didn't know if maybe there were more that could stack on top of that or if we're gonna have like a glorified brick wall built right there. I don't, I was just curious what the process on that would be.
Yeah, we could certainly look at all of that. I think it would be nice to have the concrete wall there because that could be seating for the fireworks.
That's a good idea.
Because it'll have to be something that goes down in the ground because that's the issue is when that water rushes, it rushes it out.
Right.
It's a full on retaining.
Yeah.
And Ms. Denise, what's the plan of replacing the two pieces of equipment?
They're gonna bring it back to us.
Yeah, we have to bring it back after we see what we spend on the mulch and stuff.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember Mercury, yes. Councilmember Taylor, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, we have RFQ twenty-five dash oh three. Ms. Kelly.
Yes, thank you. So back in January, an RFQ was issued for engineering consulting services. The services that we were requesting were industrial water regulations, standard specifications for construction of utilities facilities, inspection of utility facility construction, underground utilities, stormwater and floodplain management, civil engineering, roadway design, grant management assistant, architecture and electrical engineering. We had, I believe there were eight firms that responded. You have the score sheets in the packet that I'm recommending that we, that you approve the top three scoring firms, which were Kimley Horn, Polston Engineering and Civil Serv Design Group. The RFQs were scored by the previous utilities manager, Joseph Sleva, the utilities analyst, Andy Mogul and myself.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none?
I'll go ahead and make the motion then to approve Polston Engineering with the score of two hundred eighty. So you do three of them.
Three of them. So Kimley Horn, Polston Engineering and Civil Serv.
Three.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Just to clarify, you're talking about Kimley Horn, Polston Engineering and Civil Serv.
Correct.
Alrighty, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember Mercury, yes. Councilmember Taylor, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number sixteen, we have groundwater, ground storage water tank restoration. Ms. Kelly.
Yes, thank you. FDEP came out and visited the city's water plants on March twenty, I'm sorry, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. As of the printing of this packet, I didn't have the written report. I did receive it on Friday. There were six minor corrections that need to be made. Three have already been addressed. Three have already been addressed. Um, the other three are contemplated in this staff report. It's mainly rehabbing and painting the water tanks. And you can see the three different prices there, thirty-one, seven seventy-four, twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty, and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty. Staff is recommending that we piggyback off of the City of Chiflin's contract with Southern Corrosion to have this done in a timely manner.
Trying to find the total that we're actually approving here.
Well, on, on that note, it says if we approve all three, we get to deduct twenty-five hundred. Is that true?
Right.
That's what it says on the second two. So I'm gonna hold it to it, because it's in print. Says if the proposal for the exterior, the five hundred and the two fifty, or whatever the other one was, um, are both accepted, then twenty-five hundred dollars can be deducted from the combined total of both proposals. If separate PO numbers are issued, you can deduct twelve fifty from each one.
I like it.
I see.
Did you have a total?
We have ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four minus?
Twenty-five hundred.
Ninety-two, two seventy-four.
Ninety-two, two seventy-four. Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the restoration of the groundwater storage tanks for ninety-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars?
So move.
We have a motion. So we have a second. We do. Any further questions?
Just one question. Do you know how long that's gonna last? How often do we have to do this?
There was warranty information.
Oh, real? I didn't see. I looked for it.
I could find out and get back to you on that. I do know that the CRA is looking at painting some of these, um, tanks in a more decorative fashion on top of this painting.
Okay.
Alright, so we have a motion in a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Mercury?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have number seventeen. We have the selected twenty-twenty-five legislation.
Okay, so, um, the first one I'm gonna go through is House Bill seven oh-three-three. Was a tax, that basically it was accumulated, what was left over from the last session. Um, tax bills, uh, um, the, um, homestead, a tax, there was a lot of really, really bad stuff this session in there, but it's, it's been whittled down to just a few bad things. It's, uh, not as many bad things as there were. This particular one is dead now. Um, so those, uh, those tax bills are dead. The, um, Senate bill, the next one, Senate Bill one-ten, rural communities, had some really bad stuff in it with regard to CRAs. That's dead. Um, but, um, died messages. Um, the, um, House Bill twelve fifty-five mandates that cities and counties administratively approved charter schools, site plan, or development application, if the school's compliance with state law has been signed, it's now law. Senate Bill one-oh, eight-oh, um, that, um, unanimously vote, Union and Natives vote, uh, required to increase impact fees to some extent, twelve percent. And they are phased over two to four-year period. That was waiting. Um, it's been passed, and, um, it is now, um, waiting on the governor's signature. Uh, I don't expect that he won't, but, you know, there it is. Uh, five eighty-two makes unlawful demolition of buildings listed in the National Registry of, of Historical Buildings. Um, find twenty percent of the building value, pretty substantial. Um, that's signed. I guess it could be substantial, could be also, not, not very much. House Bill seven oh-three, uh, telecom, telecom, uh, utility relocates. Originally, the bill was to, um, record, require cities, um, that need to relocate, uh, utilities in a right of way, because they're expanding a road in the past, you know, that you just basically told the utilities that were there, but by, by your permission, that they had to move their lines, um, and so on. They were gonna make that, so you had to pay for that moving. So, uh, fortunately, that, um, that got changed a lot, um, and, um, it's now they're, they're gonna develop a fund, um, that'll work with fifty million dollars taken from local government, have sent, um, sales tax, meaning that's gonna reduce the shared dirt revenues for the city, which is a bad thing. But the good thing is you don't have to pay for them if you have to expand roads. That's been signed. Um, House Bill six eighty-three would exempt, um, local government regulation and use of synthetic grass in yards. Um, it's on hold for DEP study is what that, what the, that bill turned out to be, and that's signed. Uh, Senate Bill one-eighty, co- conference emergency-related, um, uh, limiting post-storm permitting power flood mitigation regulations, basically, uh, you know, not picking on people that have problems because of, uh, hurricanes and so on. Um, that, uh, one-eighty has passed and it's waiting for the, the, um, governor's, um, signature. I don't see any reason why they would, you wouldn't, but, um, and it could have today. I just, this is just based on, you know, it takes, um. It author, um, seventeen thirty, local, uh, Live Local Act amendments, uh, basically, um, this is, um, basically, it's a, it's an update on that and some, uh, made some changes in some, you know, some additions, but mostly changes and clarifications. This bill authorizes, but doesn't require a city to, uh, authorize affordable housing development on any parcel owned by a religious institution and can contain, contain a house of worship. That was a, basically a specialty thing for, I think it was Fort Myers. Um, but, uh, it's now applies to the whole state. Clarifies that the Live Local Act applies to PUD areas that are permitted for, uh, commercial, industrial, or mixed use. In the past, there was always, um, um, a, um, some people arguing it didn't apply to mixed use, and they're clarifying it does. So, um, the, um, uh, it also clarifies the Live Local Act prohibits cities from requiring more than ten percent total square feet of mixed-use residential projects be used for non-residential purposes. Bill also clarifies as to height, density, and floor area ratio waivers and specifies that the local government may not restrict the height of a Live Local Act project below the highest allowed height uh, or set on July first, two thousand twenty-three for a building within one mile of a Live Local Act project. Now, I don't know how that'll affect you, but I'm sure it'll affect some cities. Um, added a Live Local Act provision addressing the density and, uh, floor area ratio. And, and, uh, term floor area ratio now includes floor lot ratio and lot coverage. Um, which Jeff was here to explain that to me. A Live Local Act proj, projects must only be subject to administrative approval. No boards or public hearings for review if consistent with the comp plan, LDC. That means it won't come to you. It'll be administrative approved. Um, there should be a, um, administrative process for that. Um, I, I, I talked to Jeff about that a while back. Have they, have they suggested anything for that?
He's not talked to me about it, no.
Okay, we need, we need to get with them and, and find out what they've done for other cities. I mean, we, I can do it, but I think they've already done it, okay? Um, and there's, I think there's a suggested procedure that the, uh, even at the, um, um, Florida League of Cities put together that can be utilized if need be. Um, so additionally, if requested, city must re, um, consider, um, reducing minimum parking requirements by fifteen percent if Live Local Act project in proximity of off-street parking, parking garage, or local transit. It's possibly adjacent to land be used for parking, but, but not required in that case. Uh, so if you're close to these types of, of, uh, areas for, then, um, you, they, we have to reduce the parking by fifteen percent. Added legal provisions for Live Local Act disputes if developer believes cities not complying with the prevailing party, attorney fees not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand. Ouch. Um, how home-based businesses, cottage food operations, and short-term rentals are excluded from the definition of commercial property. So trying to bootstrap a development into a residential area, because there's, you know, a few of those cottage businesses, uh, will not work. Uh, excludes recreational uses from commercial definitions such as golf courses, swimming pools, and associated clubhouses within a residential district. Don't know how that'll affect you, but I'm sure a lot of people are relieved. Um, building moratoriums designed to prohibit or delay Live Local Act project prohibited except under certain limitations and accept flooding management required, requiring sewer repairs. Um, and they're talking about stormwater sewers up there. Annual report to DEO containing Live Local Act informa, information, uh, as to proposals, approval, and denial. Um, this, um, will be, effective date will be July first. If the governor signs it, it, it has, uh, it's passed, but it's waiting for the gov, governor. Um, House, um, Bill seven oh-thirty-three, which was a missing middle for the Live Local Act taxation, uh, that's dead. So we can move on. Senate Bill one-ten with guard, so those, uh, additional additions is dead. Um, see, Senate Bill nine fifty-four. Um, Certified Recovery, uh, um, residences, uh, addresses a regulation as those, uh, residences establishes new mandates on local governments requiring accommodation and oversight of these facilities. Si, city must adopt an ordinance by January first, two thousand twenty-six. Will need to keep that in mind. Um, to establish the procedures for reviewing and approving those applications. Um, all combinations and ordinances required to create, are, are, to be in compliance with ADA as well as federal and state fair housing laws and must approve, um, uh, provide approval or denial of accommodation within sixty days of complete application. That is paced, passed and waiting on the governor to sign. That's it.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, city manager updates?
Thank you. Um, just in case people didn't see this in the packet, the Ernest E. Sims Road renaming is moving forward at the county. They will have a hearing within the next forty-five days for Prof. Sims Street. Then the second update I have is the Florida League of Cities has announced their twenty-twenty-five annual conference for elected officials. I would love for you guys to go and come back super energized. I know it'll be more work for me when you do, but I'm a glutton for punishment. So if you want to go, please let me know. No later than July twenty-second, because that's the cutoff date. Oh, and the dates of the conference are August fourteenth through the sixteenth at Orlando Bonnet Creek Hilton Resort.
Anything else? Alright, anything else for the good of the city?
I got one thing, real quick. Just to let people know, um, on Wednesday, July sixteenth, which I have a, um, electronic copy of this, if you guys don't have it already. Um, but the county, it, in conjunction with the ship program and the different grants, are, they're having a, um, Affordable Housing Informational Fair on Wednesday, July sixteenth, from ten to six PM at the Avon Park Community Center. They said they still have lots of funds, um, to disperse. So there is still grant money available for anybody who experienced damage from Hurricane Ian or Hurricane Nicole. Um, so it can include windows, roofing, siding, just about anything you can think of, and that is a grant. As far as I know, so I don't think you have to repay any of that. Um, if you do have an organization, they are still accepting vendors or informational booths to be set up. If you would like to do that, you can contact, um, four zero, eight-six-three, four-zero-two, six-six-four-eight.
Anything else for the good of the city? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you.